Good evening, folks. As we take just a minute to allow all the attendees to join in, I don't know if it happens instantly or the numbers climb on my end. So if you could just give us a moment or two. There are quite a lot of you here tonight, which is great. Okay, looks like we have leveled off. By way of introduction, briefly, for those of you that might be joining us for the first time, my name is Jim Nichol. In the Zoom box below, I'm listed as Board President. I am currently serving as your Board President. You've got the other eight members, the total nine of us on the Seneca Valley School Board, and leadership from our district from a variety of positions. I felt I should point out, which you can see, that I'm wearing a sweatshirt today. One, because my house was a little cold today. But two, I always like to wear some Seneca Valley swag. So I was just gonna, you know, props to Roy and Wrangler Middle School. Just something little to start the meeting. Folks, welcome. It is September 21st. It is our action meeting for the district. I'd like to, as I call this meeting to order, ask you to join us as we always do in a moment of silence before our pledge. Thank you, everyone. And I'll turn to Ms. Polano for our... I believe I'll be turning to Ms. Polano, or is it Ms. Andreasey introducing Ms. Polano?
I think I'll start off, Mr. President, and then Dr. Polano will help me. So this evening, for our "I Led the Pledge," we are featuring Brody Frederick, who is a second grader at Connequinn-Nessing Valley Elementary School. He is the son of Heather Cox and was chosen to appear tonight by Mrs. Deanne Graham, who is principal at CVE. Brody was very excited to be selected to participate tonight. So please be sure to catch his very big smile at the end of this "I Led the Pledge." So at this time, if you are able, I would ask you to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge a vouchsake flag of the United States of America to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm having some small difficulties getting back on. There we go. Sorry about that, folks. Just had a little technical difficulty. Folks, that was adorable. It is almost always the highlight for me of our meetings. I would love to have you join us when we eventually get back in person, because it's even more fun. The kids typically want to come up and bang the gavel. We're just so thrilled to have them come in and be part of this for us. So thank you for that, everyone. With that, I'll turn to Lisa, our Board Secretary, to call the roll for the meeting.
Ms. Bradle?
Here.
Mr. Detulio?
Here.
Ms. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. Hester?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Nichol?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Whittle?
Here.
And Mr. Widowsen?
Here.
Thank you, Lisa. Folks, we start with some information reports before we get into some action agenda items. For the first of those, I'll turn to Ms. Andreasey for both our states to remember, as well as our student and staff recognition.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Just a few dates to remember on our agenda this evening. Tomorrow is the start of the fall season. This Saturday, we will be hosting SAT testing at the senior high school with 112 students registered. On Sunday is the beginning of Yom Kippur. And then on October 3rd, we will be holding yet another SAT testing date at the senior high with 60 students. And social distancing will take place on both of those dates, just to make note. Under Student Staff Recognition Item B, we do have one item that we'd like to bring to your attention. There was an impactful lesson from last school year that has carried over for many of our students, but especially for one of our freshman students. You may recall that last fall, Lahini Ranawara, in partnership with Classrooms Without Borders of Pittsburgh, participated in a Holocaust immersion day at Ryan-Glyer Middle School, where she and a classmate sang a Yiddish song for their peers. CWB was so impressed with that performance, they reached out recently and invited Ms. Ranawara to participate in a CWB virtual event that took place on September 10th. In addition to sharing a recording of the song, Ms. Ranawara spoke live about her experiences with the CWB and learning about the Holocaust at RGMS. The intent of the program was to help others across the nation and abroad learn about the incredible impact CWB has had on schools like Seneca Valley. And that is actually all I have this evening, unless you have questions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Andreasey. Does anyone have any questions or any commentary on either the student staff recognition or our dates to remember? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
I wonder if I could just ask about the testing on Saturday. We're over 100 students now, if I heard correctly. Are those all Seneca Valley students? And how are we going to... Are we going to be able to maintain appropriate COVID prevention activities?
I'm seeing Mr. Roberts nodding his head, perhaps?
I can take that. So we'll be using a number of classrooms in the senior high school building. We are an open site, so there could be students that attend at other high schools or private schools in our community. But the desks will be socially distanced, and the individual test takers will be assessed prior to being admitted to the testing site. So there's protocols in place through the SAT specifically for making sure that that's a safe testing environment on Saturday.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Good to hear there's no Saturday letdown there.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Roberts. We are in... We've got one other information report. These are our financial reports. They were in both last week's backup, as well as this week's. They are the financial reports for operations, senior high activities, intermediate high activities, middle school activities, athletics, food services, tax collection reports, and capital project funds, as always. Please, if you haven't yet, if you have any questions on those reports, please feel free to reach out to Lynn Burtner, our business manager. So folks, with that, we'll move into some of the action items that we're going to look to approve of the board this evening. As we enter into this section of our meeting each month, we allow, in fact, we welcome the public to comment in front of the board on any topic. We require that they be a constituent of the district. We ask they perhaps talk about where they live and not talk about, but I think we've got some information on their address and who the representative is. Folks, you know, I know that there's some... There's gonna be a lot of emotion this evening. We've got some big topics to discuss. Again, I welcome you to the microphone, the virtual microphone. We typically give each of the folks who come to our microphone four minutes to speak. I do keep a timer, but that's really only to give you some guidance as you're getting close to the four minutes. Rest assured, if you take a little longer than that, that's absolutely fine. I'll just... I'll do a little high sign if you can see me, just so that you know you're getting closer to that time. But I do want to allow you to make your points, to go through your commentary. So please don't think that I'm trying to shush you off the camera or off the microphone, excuse me. So with that, we'll open public comment. I believe Dr. Polano is gonna guide us through and introduce our first speaker.
Yes, we have four individuals this evening requesting an opportunity to speak to the board. The first that registered is Mrs. Jessica Todd. Mrs. Todd, momentarily, you should have the option to unmute yourself to address the board.
Thank you, Dr. Polano. Hello.
Green, green. Thanks for being here.
Sure. Thank you for listening. As I said, my name is Jessica Todd, and I live in Zillianopol. I have a second and fifth grader in Seneca Valley. We go to CVE. Earlier last week, I wrote a letter to each of the board members explaining why I feel the hybrid model provides poor educational outcomes, is causing a decline in the mental and social health of our children, and is potentially making us all less safe. In the interest of my time, I will address my two biggest concerns here tonight: my children's education and their mental health. The CDC states on their website that long breaks from in-person education are harmful to student learning. As the person administering education in my household, I can report that this remote learning model is ineffective for elementary students. I am beyond grateful to the teachers for the efforts they are putting in, but what we are experiencing at home is not providing an education. Home is a place to decompress, be with family, and play with friends. As an adult who now works from home, it is hard for me to block out distractions and focus on my work. It is unrealistic to expect an eight- and 10-year-old to be able to do so. A child's mind doesn't know how to turn off these distractions and pay attention to a talking head on a computer screen. As for mental health, my oldest son became very depressed during the quarantine because of isolation. He now lives for Tuesdays and Thursdays because he gets to be around people in school. He needs more interaction. My youngest son has become a basket case over the hybrid model. He wakes up totally stressed out about what day it is, where he is supposed to go, and what he is supposed to do. He needs structure and consistency to be able to relax, learn, grow, and thrive. Hearing me talk about our current situation doesn't even do it justice. I welcome any one of you to come to our house on a Monday, Wednesday, or Friday to teach my children while you're also working full-time. Witness the tears, the screaming, and the frustration firsthand. See exactly how little they are learning during their formative years. In closing, I implore you to vote to give your constituents a choice. Save our children's education and mental health. Vote to allow those of us who are comfortable trusting that the school staff is providing a safe environment to return to traditional learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Todd. I apologize. I forgot to turn off my mute. I mean, I can hear the emotion in your voice. I... And I'll mention this later, but we've received, as a members of the board, hundreds and literally hundreds of emails with a variety of viewpoints. But, I mean, I'm a parent in the district. You know, both of my boys are graduates of Seneca Valley. I don't... They're not in school right now, but, you know, I can empathize certainly, and I think of all the kids in our district as sort of, you know, my own kids as I think about the decisions that I make and the votes that I cast. So thank you for being here. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Polano, Dr. Polano, would you please welcome our next guest?
Yes, our next guest this evening is Ms. Rebecca Snyder. Ms. Snyder, you should momentarily... In moments, you should have the opportunity to unmute yourself and address the board.
I hope you can hear me okay.
We've got you loud and clear. Thanks for being here.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. As I said, my name is Rebecca Snyder. I live in Cranberry Township, and I have two daughters in the district. One is a senior, and the other's a seventh grader. Six weeks ago, the school board voted to utilize the cohort model for the first four weeks of the school year. At this time, only two of those weeks have passed. Our children have actually only been in the building and on the buses four out of nine school days. Not even a full two weeks have passed since the first of them entered the building. In addition, the public has learned only within the last week through reporting by the New York Times that the CDC guidance on returning to school was not purely driven by science and data. I am a registered nurse with 15 years of experience working with some of the most immunosuppressed individuals in our community. I readily admit that my typical approach to infection prevention is an abundance of caution. As the board moves forward in considering whether or not to return our students to full-time five days a week, my concerns consistently return to the barriers within the confines of the school buildings and buses. Any parent, teacher, or administrator who has entered a Seneca Valley school building on a typical day prior to 2020 knows that there is not sufficient space in classrooms, hallways, or buses for appropriate social distancing. My daughter's bus, for example, to Ryan-Glyer Middle School, has seat assignments. If we return to five days a week full-time, she will sit three to a seat on that bus, as she has for almost every other year. Lastly, I'm confident that if the board votes to return to five days a week, that there will be an option for students to remain in the cohort model. Unfortunately, those who choose that model will not be able to lessen their risk on the days that they do return to campus, as there will be twice as many students in each hallway, classroom, and bus. I urge the board to consider all of this when you vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. I appreciate you being here, and I certainly feel the passion with which you make your commentary. We thank you for the time and the effort, the initiative, to come and join us this evening. Thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Polano, would you please... I believe we have a total of four, so would you please welcome our next guest?
Yes, my apologies. I'm working on pulling up the next one right now, which I'm not able to find. So I'm going to move on to our fourth and hopefully return to number three to be able to locate that individual. So up next for public comment, we have Ms. Meredith Wolf. Ms. Wolf, in just a few moments, you will have the option to unmute and address the board.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear. Thanks for being here.
Hi. I'm sorry you haven't received an email from me before. Today was my daughter's first volleyball game in seventh grade, first time playing for a school sport team. It was very exciting. I can tell you the seventh-grade blue team beat Shaler in two games, so we're very excited. I did want to just speak for the volleyball parents. I know that there's a lot of talk about sports this fall, and it seems to all revolve around soccer and football. Volleyball is our only indoor sport right now, and having 25 parents or 25 people in attendance altogether is just unfair, considering I can go to my church at 25% capacity. I can get on an airplane with my child and sit beside a total stranger with a mask on, and that's okay. So I just want to make sure that the voices for the volleyball moms and dads are being heard and don't get lost with all of the football and soccer and the outdoor stuff and the bigger sports in the school districts. We are not having our games streamed on YouTube, but yet the JV and varsity are. There are 26 girls that play JV and varsity, and there are 40... I'm sorry, 52 girls that play seventh and eighth grade volleyball. So I just want to make sure that when decisions are being made, that everyone is being considered, and there's no discrimination on sport, gender, or grade. So please keep that in mind for all of us parents that want to see our kids succeed.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Just a couple of quick comments on that. I, you know, I've been on this board for nine-plus years, and really, in each and every instance I can think of or recall, we've taken a very inclusive approach to policies and decisions that we've made. And I believe we've done so here. I'd just ask you for a teeny bit of patience. We've had a conversation with Ms. Lewis, the Director of Health Arts, really on this topic and some others related to it. You should see some correspondence and communication from the district very soon with a little more detail for you. And as always, and I say this, you know, each and every meeting, to the extent you want to have a follow-up conversation, I know members of the administration are always open to that, as am I. My cell number is on our website, if you'd like to follow up, after you see what's put out from the Department of Health. So again, thank you for being here. I appreciate it. I'll turn back to Dr. Polano. Do we locate our... There we go. I'm seeing none of the head, great.
Yes, we did. Yes, we're ready to go with our final speaker this evening. So I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Anne Castanero. Ms. Anne Castanero is a student at our senior high school. Ms. Castanero, I am going to unmute you, so you should have the opportunity to speak to the board.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. I welcome you to your virtual microphone. I've heard some great things about you, so I'm looking forward to hearing your thoughts and comments.
Thank you very much. So yeah, I'm Annie Castanero. I'm a senior at Seneca Valley High School. And I know that I can only speak to my own experiences in the hybrid learning, and I will try to do as best I can. So I'm gonna be honest, social distancing is kind of difficult, even with the hybrid schedule sometimes. A great example of this is that in my statistics class, I am currently wedged between the right wall, the back wall, and a filing cabinet to my left. I would much prefer the filing cabinet over COVID, but I worry that if we are to go to full capacity and we add 10 or 15 more students to my class, the students aren't being safe, not even at their own fault. We aren't able to be six feet apart, and we're putting our teachers at risk. I feel like we talk a lot about how we appreciate what our teachers are doing during this time, but we need to recognize that their safety is sometimes more important than the students if they are more at risk to get COVID-19. I also am eating lunch at the school, and unless we expand the lunchroom, which I don't think that we can do in two months, it will not be socially distanced if we were to go to full capacity, especially if people aren't able to eat outside once it gets cold and stuff. We will not be able to be correctly socially distanced. Also, I readily watch and experience hallway traffic throughout the senior high especially. And it's crowded now, and it is even more crowded when we go full capacity. I cannot explain how many people accidentally bump people over. People are getting shoved accidentally. Like, these are not like... You don't have to look into these as like bullying or anything, but it's just there's so many people in the hallways, you can't get around, and it is terrible social distancing. It's rough now, and it would be way worse if we went full capacity. Currently, in the hybrid model, I am also living for my Mondays and Wednesdays to see some friends in my classes. And would I like to see all of my friends? Of course I would, but at no point does me desiring to see more of my friends on more days of the week trump any of our safety. My sister is a sophomore in the IHS, and she also feels this way, that the hybrid model has been really good for her. And I would really like to reiterate what Ms. Snyder had said, that we haven't even finished the month that we started. We... It would be even better if we could possibly go to the full nine weeks so that grading is easier, maybe. I'm obviously not a teacher, so I don't know how the grading would go. But that would be my recommendation, and I thank you very much for your time.
You're very welcome. You know, I know I speak for all nine of us. We enjoy when we have students come to join us at meetings, whether it's, you know, to receive some recognition, lead our pledge, or to give us your thoughts and comments. So I do appreciate your position, your perspective, you know. And again, I'll reference later. We've heard from a lot of people in the district, but it's always great to hear from students. So thank you very much. Okay, folks, that is our public comment for this evening. We'll start with a few action items and continue through our agenda. The first I will make a motion on, and folks, so that you know how this will roll, we follow, I think, what's loosely referred to as Robert's Rules of War. We introduce motions. We look for seconds for those motions. We allow some deliberation and discussion, and then we each individually cast a vote on the items. So the first grouping of those items, there are four in number, and I would make a motion on these items. The first is for approval of minutes. They are detailed in our backup. They're for the work session on August 3rd of this year, the regular meeting on August 10th of this year, and the special meeting on August 31st. They're for the treasures report, as provided and detailed in our backup. The general fund bills and the amount of $3,630,639.72, again, detailed in our backup. And for construction fund bills and the amount of $2,893,817.76, again, detailed for all the members of the board in our backup. That is my motion. May I have a second, please? Mr. Jacobs, thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions, or is there any discussion with regards to these four items? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, Lisa, as Board Secretary, again, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Detulio?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Widowsen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll turn to our administration action items. I'd ask Mr. Detulio to lead us through those, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna make the motion that we approve the following: Care Unlimited Inc., doing business as Avena Healthcare Provider Agreement, to approve the Care Unlimited Incorporated, doing business as Avena Healthcare Provider Agreement, to provide healthcare services to students through June 30th, 2021, as provided in our backup; the Epic Health Services Incorporated, doing business as Avena Healthcare Provider Agreement, to approve the Epic Healthcare Service Incorporated, doing business as Avena Healthcare Provider Agreement, to provide healthcare services to students through June 30th, 2021, as provided in our backup; the school bus drivers, to approve the list of new bus drivers for ABC Transit and Valley Lines as provided in our backup; and finally, the transport... Let... Excuse me. Transportation contract, to approve the transportation contract for one family to transport their child to DT Watson during the 2020-21 school year as provided in our backup.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Detulio. May I have a second for these items? Ms. Harrison, thank you. Does anyone have any questions, or is there any discussion on these administration action items? Okay. Seeing none, Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Detulio?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Widowsen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll turn to instruction action. We've got a few of those. I'll handle B and C, but I'd ask Ms. Harrison if she would start us off with item A.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to make a motion for the following item. First would be the MHY Family Services Agreement. Approve the agreement with MHY Family Services for services during the 2020-21 school year as provided in the backup.
Thank you for the motion. May I have a second on that item, please? Mr. Detulio, thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions about... And MHY, I believe, stands for the Mars Home for Youth. Anyone have any questions with regards to this agreement, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Widowsen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Detulio?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you, Lisa. Folks, I'll take the next item, and I want to make sure... And I'll delineate a little bit for you, and then ask Dr. Polano to provide a few comments. This next item, which is item B, and I'll be making the motion in a second, is about a health and safety plan we've had in place, I believe, since July. I can't remember the first meeting where we approved it. We've made several revisions to it. Dr. Polano will highlight the revisions. They're very, very minor. The conversation around full-time in-person instruction, we'll really... We'll get into that with the next item. But the motion I would like to make is to approve the revised phased school reopening health and safety plan, to approve that plan, which is detailed in our backup, provided initially several months ago with modifications highlighted for all members of the board in our backup for this meeting. That is my motion. May I have a second, please? Mr... Or, excuse me, Ms. Harrison, thank you. So that's the motion in second. Dr. Polano, would you just take a few minutes for the members of the board and the public listening to let us know what has been revised in this health and safety plan with this revision?
Sure. As you stated previously, there were two minor changes. One on page 23. There was preliminary guidance early on from the Pennsylvania Department of Health that suggested school districts dismiss siblings of students who were exhibiting signs of COVID-19 while at school. However, the Pennsylvania Department of Health is no longer directing schools to also dismiss siblings. Therefore, that language has been updated. So that's the change on page 23. So that's the change on page 23. There is one additional change this evening, and that is on page 25. When there is no direct exposure to COVID-19 and a student or staff member is experiencing symptoms associated with COVID-19, we are asking parents and guardians to consult with their child's doctor to confirm that the student or staff member is safe to return to school and to communicate that confirmation from a physician with us. So those are the two changes in the plan, one on page 23 and one on page 25.
Thank you, Dr. Pallano. Does anyone have any questions with regards to these revisions as we seek to reapprove a revised plan for health and safety? Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. We've had discussion. Lisa, would you please call the roll on this item, item B?
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Bradl.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Hester.
Yes.
Ms. Whittle.
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Whitterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you, Lisa. The next item in our instruction action items is what I expect most of our attendees are here to hear our thoughts and comments and the vote on the motion. There are, by the way, 658 of you online with us this evening. We appreciate you taking the hour or two that it will take. I will make the motion. I will seek a second for the motion and then we'll have some commentary, some deliberation. The motion is regarding full-time in-person instruction. And that motion is that beginning October 5th of 2020, all children who attend in-person instruction will come to school physically five days per week. Live streaming will be available from the classroom and synchronously for those that may be quarantined or have a medical issue or concerns. That is my motion. May I have a second, please? Mr. DeTulio, thank you. So folks, there are some times when I allow members of the board to deliberate and give some thoughts first and then I tend to wrap. Other times where I'll take the lead and I will for a couple of minutes. The first thing that I want to tell you is, but I want you to look closely or think closely about the language in this motion. The comment that live streaming will be available is noteworthy. That's something that we have been working our way towards in the district. I think it's, again, worth noting that it will be available for all students starting October 5th. Now, let me start out by saying with regards to this motion, so that I can sort of get that out there first, that I'm in support of this motion. I'm supportive of it and of providing the option for five-day week instruction for the children of the Seneca Valley School District. Now, by way of backdrop, for all of you in our virtual audience this evening, the nine members of the school board have received hundreds of emails from families in the district. Those go back as far as July. They lead all the way up to today. Each and every one of us see each of those emails and we read each of those emails. Many of them are advocating for this path, the five-day week option. But many, and tonight I think it's a good representation or representative sample from our speakers, many advocate staying the course with the cohort model that we're currently offering. I appreciate each and every one of you taking the time to reach out to us. I really do. And I appreciate all of you, the hundreds that are here this evening, joining us for this meeting. But I want to be clear, I want to emphasize that my support for this path, this motion, is born on what I know to have been and continue to be the plans, the process, the protocols, and the equipment put in place here at Seneca Valley to, as best we can, mitigate the risk associated with moving forward with this path. And it is also born on what I believe are the risks associated with not moving forward with this path. Live streaming and virtual learning, while I'm glad we can offer it, is not ideal. Continuing to materially limit student interaction with each other and their teachers in the learning process is not ideal. I believe, and this is one person, I believe there are real, real mental health risks if we don't provide those that wish to have it. And I'll emphasize that. The opportunity to come to our buildings five days each week to learn, mature, and grow in as optimal an environment as we can provide. Now, if I go back into August, I know there was concern, fear really, in the weeks leading up to the start of our school year because of the unknown. Now that we've begun, I at least believe some of those fears have been allayed because they've been able to experience it. And I recognize there is some fear, and we heard that this evening from a couple of our speakers, around what may happen if our children return to school five days a week. I believe it's time to see what actually happens when we do this. I believe in the risk mitigating aspects of our process here at Seneca Valley, which I emphasized earlier. But I also want to be clear about an aspect of this that you may not be focusing on. If we see cases arise at Seneca Valley with numbers around recommendations from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, which Dr. Vitale has provided a link to all of us, that's available to all of you to take a look at, but in those recommendations, we will be forced to close for either five to seven days or even 14 days, depending on the number of cases that might arise in the district. In other words, if in fact our process does not limit the spread of the virus on our campus, we will close, we will regroup, and we will move to a full virtual option while we consider alternatives. So in conclusion, and just to reiterate, I'm supportive of the motion for all the reasons I've stated. With this, I want to turn to my colleagues on the board who have spent a lot of time and effort and energy looking at all the data that we've been provided over the last several months to see what thoughts or comments they have in advance of voting on our motion. So with that, I'll turn it to the full group and see who might like to start. Mr. DeTulio.
I'm going to off mute. There we go. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to start and say it's great to see the 600-plus that have joined us tonight. And there's a lot of familiar names on the list as well. And we appreciate seeing you all here. And I have read all the correspondence and the emails that we've received in reference to returning to school five days a week. And one of the things I want to thank everyone for that sent those emails was there were words of thanks and good wishes presented to us on the board and knowing that we have a difficult job. And to be honest, that makes me so thankful to be able to serve the Seneca Valley community because this isn't an easy thing to do. As Mr. Nickel said, we have been looking at data and information and discussing this for months. Dr. Vitale has provided us, you know, all this data that we need to be able to, you know, look at and be able to act upon. I did want to answer one of the recurring questions that I also saw in a lot of these emails, since there were hundreds of them, but there was something that came through that said, you know, basically, I hope you read this. And I can guarantee you, yes, we do. All nine of us have spent hours reading the hundreds of emails that have come across because we do take it seriously. The other thing that I was seeing in those emails and communications was there was an overwhelming message of support for a five-day-a-week in-person instruction. And I support that plan because, as I've been saying since the beginning, five-day in-person instruction is the best way to educate the students of the district. One of the most disturbing themes that I saw in the communication was the struggles and disappointments of parents. And the way that they classified it is their failure to teach their children. We have education professionals that have been stressed attempting to teach over the last six months. They didn't learn how to teach this way in school. So I want to reassure the parents that you didn't fail either. It was never the attention or what the board wanted was for you to replace a professional teacher. We were making the decisions at the time to keep us and our students and staff safe and the community of the Seneca Valley School District safe. So one of the things that happened was there was some burden put upon parents and they took it upon themselves because they wanted to try so hard to help. And we appreciate that. I feel bad that a lot of parents took that burden and felt like they have failed their children. You haven't failed. We're learning this together. So I think that that's one of the reasons that I am very supportive of us returning to five days a week. And I'm confident that we can do that. And it will alleviate all that anxiety. And then it's going to prepare the students and the families for an education success. Returning five-day in-person learning is the best for our most special learners as well as those high achievers. Both ends of the spectrum are going to benefit. And I do want to make everyone aware, if they don't already, that I have five children and I have three that are still in the district and they're on the secondary campus. I have one in each of the buildings. And they will be returning for five-day instruction if it's approved tonight. And there was a lot of communication we did that had a concern with returning to five-day learning. And I'm confident that with the synchronous learning that's being implemented as part of the plan, it will provide them an instruction option that is a best fit for their family. And while the five-day instruction that we're going to go back to isn't what we had in February, it is the in-person instruction that's going to be most beneficial for our students. And we are going to stay vigilant with our safety protocols, the cleanings. And that's going to be in order to continue to offer this best education experience for our staff and students. The thing I want to end on with my support is I'm going to ask that all the students, the staffs, and the parents, you stay vigilant, patient, and kind as we go through this process because I know that together this community can do this. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Mr. DeTulio. I'll look to the group again and see who might have additional comment. Ms. Harrison, please.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. One thing I want, and it kind of ties to Mr. DeTulio saying, stay kind and vigilant. It's not the school board making a decision. It's not teachers making decisions. It's not families making decisions. We're all partners in this process. And if you have a problem, no one, I've heard so many people say, no, I can't call a teacher because they'll retaliate against my child. Please, whether we're cohort or five days, it doesn't matter. We're partners in the education. We all have the same goal in mind, a good education for the children. And I want you to feel comfortable with that.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Mr. Hester, please.
Yeah, I, first of all, wanted to thank the administration and the staff and the teachers for the many hundreds of hours they've put into working on all the features to try to make it safe for our kids, safe for each other, safe for our community. That's the most important thing to all of us up here. I know it is. I mean, from the misters we got to the temperature gauges or controls we have as the students walk in, to the masks, to the visors, to all the things that they've done to make this system work. The one thing we can't control and the one thing we just have a lack of is space. When I look at the spacing at the elementary schools especially, I don't see any way we can have social distancing in those. The most, even if we're at 80% in those schools, the most space we can have is two to three feet between kids. I have a big concern. Everything we see says the features we have to have to be safe are a mask and social distancing of six feet or more, unless they're less than 15 minutes. With our plan with putting every kid into the room, I'm very concerned about the social distancing aspect. So because of that, I do not support going back five days a week at this point. I will in the future, but at this point I do not. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Hester. Mr. Peterson, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. COVID fatigue is real in spite of the fact that we've passed now 200,000 deaths in the United States. This truly is a pandemic. It's not the dramatic incident like a tornado or an earthquake, but it's here. And perhaps it's even more insidious because it's not overt. I think that if you look at the distribution of cases in Pennsylvania over time, there was a huge spike in April that came back down fairly quickly, getting into the late spring, early summer. And much of that diminution of new cases is accorded to the fact that most, but not all, but most citizens took it upon themselves to practice good hygiene, to practice hand washing, to practice social distancing, to wearing masks. And we've seen the positive impact of that over time. It's a lasting impact. So I've said before, my thinking about all of this, I have to put into three slots. The first one is our mission to provide education. And from the feedback we've gotten, the voluminous feedback we've gotten, it sounds like that's a little bit of a draw, that some parents are actually thinking their educational experience is better because they're now involved daily with their kids and what they're doing in terms of learning exercises. Other parents are just so frustrated, they can scream because it's just not working well for them. So in item one, education, I think it's a draw. And item two, in my mind, it was the preservation of the health and safety of the staff. And I think that what senior administration has done has been exemplary. I know that the staff, every one of the staff members, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, all the support personnel and senior administration have worked incredibly hard to try to make things work on behalf of the kids, always with the kids' safety and learning processes in focus. And then the third element in my mind is the element that we can lump into perhaps, mental health issues. All of the support issues, all of the counseling that occurs, all of the therapy, therapeutic work that occurs with the kids. And that, I really think, is getting lost. So while every fiber of my public health being, I've lived my entire life in public health and population health, says we should not go to five-day, we should not break down our efforts at social hygiene, I nonetheless think that the issues of mental health and counseling trump the threat of the somatic issues, of the actual transmission of the flu. And so with great hesitation, I'm going to vote tonight in favor of the five-day return. With a strict caveat, we all need to understand that we need to pivot very quickly if things change. Parents need to be prepared to get a message, much like a snow day message, one morning that says because of an unanticipated outbreak of cases, there will be no school today. And parents need to be able to tolerate a period of time for senior administration to understand what has changed in the environment and what the best response to that change has been. So I'm going to come down in favor of five-day. The two caveats are that our overburdened staff works even harder to look to the health and safety of the children, both their somatic health and their psychiatric health. And that all of our community to be ready to change this direction if indeed it passes, virtually at a moment's notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I appreciate the thoughts and comments and your wisdom on this topic. I'll look around the virtual room. Mr. Jacobs, please.
Thank you. Good evening. I feel that we as a board have a responsibility to give the Seneca Valley community a choice to return to five-day instruction on October 5th. I think it's, again, important to note the work of the Return to School Steering Committee and that it engaged every feasible group of constituents as they did their work. As we approved in July, that committee had to state a goal and recommendation that we return to school five days. Since we approved that plan on July 20th, every meaningful statistic related to the pandemic has improved. This is true of new case averages, hospital and ICU capacity, and testing capacity. That's true in Butler and Allegheny Counties. Beyond the statistics and because of the hard work of the administration and staff, every variable that we talked about, every significant variable that we talked about as a hurdle to five days, in my estimation, has been reasonably satisfied. These include contact tracing protocols, availability of PPE, availability of cleaning materials, staffing concerns, transportation, the list goes on. It was a long list and it's amazing how well we met it. Also informing, but certainly not deciding our vote should be that other school districts that was out entirely in Butler entirely in Butler County, each of them, are in their third or fourth week of five-day instruction without significant disruption. Dr. Vitale, I fully agree with you that Seneca Valley is different from each of those. However, it should inform our decision that this is something that can be done safely. I think also consistently throughout this process, it's been clear that the majority of families favor this option. True in July with the parent survey, it was true in August with learning model selections, and it's true now with projections for what capacity would be, in-person capacity would be on October 5, which by the way is not 100%, but rather closer to 80%. Now, in spite of all this, it'd be very easy for us to say, what we have is working, it's good enough, why change now? What's the hurry? Numbers and protocols are one thing, but the impact on people is another. I've had more conversations with people in the community than I ever thought I would. And I think if we had multiple children learning at home while we're trying to work full-time, we'd know it's not working. If we had a kindergartner at school five hours a week in front of their computer, the rest, we'd know it's not good enough. If we were teachers that are at work five days a week while our kids are only there two days a week, we'd understand this is not sustainable. And if we had our kids who usually love school in tears and tantrums, we'd understand the hurry. And I want to be very clear, I am very proud of how we've improved remote learning in a short amount of time, but remote learning on its best day is not a substitute for in-person instruction. So we've done the research, we've put in the work, we've implemented the protocols, and we've planned the contingencies. For those reasons, I'm supportive and think that we should offer the option to be in school five days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Is there anyone else who would like to make comment, or Ms. Braddell, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nickel. First of all, I'd just like to thank the administration and the staff, the entire staff, for a tremendous job getting us to this point. I know it's been mentioned by several others, but I'm going to mention it again. I think we've had a very positive start to the school year. And because of where we are at this point, I think I'm going to let you know my, give you my support for the five days, because I think we're ready to pivot. I, just like all of you, have had more conversations with my neighbors and people in my region than I have in all the time I've been on this board. I've heard both positive and negative comments, and a lot of frustration. I have been a stay-at-home mom and a working mom, and I can't imagine doing this for an entire semester myself. I think we are ready to go back. I think we need to for the mental health of our community. With that said, there are risks. I mean, we could be essentially by the end of the semester in remote learning. But one thing I feel that we have an advantage over other districts, and I always say, let's not compare, but we are ready to pivot. I had been a part of the steering committee all summer long, and as Mr. Jacobs said, and Mr. Nickel said, the administrators on that committee, the teachers on that committee, had broken this down into such finite pieces that they looked at every single possibility that could happen. And that's why we're ready to move forward. I hope that, you know, we don't have an instance where we have to go to remote learning, but we're ready in any case. And I just think that we need to get the children back in the school. It's not going to be easy. The social distancing may not always be there, but I think in these past two weeks, we've taught them the proper protocols, and I think we can do this. So you have my vote or my support.
Thank you, Ms. Braddell. Absolutely. Any last comments? Ms. Whittle, please.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. I think I mentioned last week, we were talking about the sports with Ms. Lewis, that we were in the marathon. I'm going to retract that statement. We're in a ultra marathon. It's over 50 miles or 100 miles. And I want to recognize everybody's support that's been working since March, and that is down to the custodians, cafeteria workers. We have just been pushing, pushing, pushing. The administrators, people I think we don't even think about. We've had more communication as a board, individually, as a group, as committees. And I just want to recognize in the research, and that's why, like, going through this process with this team, this has been the most difficult and agonizing thing for me, to decide what's best, because everything isn't a one-size-fits-all. So I'm usually black and white, and it's an easy decision for me, but there is a lot of moving parts. And I want, I appreciate each and every one of us. This board I'm proud of. And the people out there, the custodians, the cafeteria, the scanners, the bus drivers, everybody, the community, we're all in this together. My job leads me to always look at the science part of the COVID. But ever since we've been doing this, we've been moving to five days a week. The way that we pivot, that's why I feel comfortable. I am going towards, let's send our kids back five days a week. As saying that, we could have information before October 5 that doesn't allow us to do that. And I want you to know that we are looking at those things that will be given to us by the CDC, and our administration, as you can tell, nobody does their research like they do. So I just hope that we can still stay within the protocols, the families buy into it. Please be honest if your children are exposed to it. Wear our masks. Try to social distance. It's about an attitude, too. Have a good attitude about it. Patience. And give this an opportunity to try. The teachers have just their learning curve since they've been brought in in mid-August with all the technology. We can't let them, you know, give them a break also. Remote learning isn't going to be perfect today, but it's not how we finish the race, it's not how we start, it's how we finish. So let's give each other patience. And this isn't ideal, and it's never going to feel comfortable. So I'll quit on my little tangent there, but thank you for the time, and I wish us all luck.
Thank you, Ms. Whittle. One point that I'd like to make, just sort of following along from your commentary, I mean, it's September 21. We would be two weeks away from starting this process. Just so that the now 724 of you online are clear, we have no intentions at this time to hold another meeting and to cast another vote on this topic. Could it happen? Absolutely. Could we see some shift left or shift right? Could we see something within our own district? Yes, we can. But the motion that we approved tonight is the path that we will be planning to take on October 5. So again, just one clarification. Last, we can certainly have follow-up, but certainly not Lisa, Mr. Whitterson, thoughts or comments? And you still are on mute, Jeff. There you go. Now you're back on mute.
How's that?
That's good.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And thanks to everyone that's taking time out of their busy schedule to attend this meeting tonight. And also thanks to the administration, staff, as Ms. Whittle said, people we probably don't even realize, our custodians, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers. They have gone over and above anything that we could have ever, ever hoped for. I've had the pleasure of serving on this board for quite a few years, now on and off. And this is the hardest decision I think we've had to make as a board. Typically, we know what the answer is as the board. We may have different ideas on how we get to that answer and want to take different directions, but we all pretty much agree on what the answer is. I think tonight, that is certainly not the case. I would like to state that I also have read all of the emails, taken a lot of them, and reread them. And there's been a slogan that I've heard in a group, strive for five. And I will submit to you that that is the goal of every board member, every administrator and teacher in this entire district. But I think that slogan might need to be amended to say, let's strive for five safely. We've only been at this, really, I think, 10 days. And if you think about it, 10 days, does that really give the board enough data to make an informed decision and say, yes, we're ready to move forward, knowing, knowing full well, even though the buildings will be at approximately 80%, that this is going to significantly limit the one thing that the medical experts, short of a vaccine and wearing a mask, has said, that social distancing is our best defense against this horrible disease. But yet, we are knowingly going to move forward and say, let's give it a try. I'm not willing to participate in that experiment. I would suggest that it is much more prudent to sit back, take our time, and see what the data looks like at the end of this nine weeks. Let's give it some time for the data to play out. The Department of Health and the Department of Education has even recommended that, given our numbers at the current state, that we are in the cohort model, or possibly remote learning. I'm sitting here, and I'm certainly not a legal expert or an attorney, but I'm wondering, what will be the legal ramifications, if any? If this board elects to ignore those recommendations and move forward, then we end up with a tragedy on our hands. It's been suggested that if we don't opt to move to five days, that it's based on fear. And I totally reject that notion. We know that the social distancing and masks are our best defenses right now. And it looks like tonight, we are going to pretty much choose to ignore that. I understand, and I appreciate the strain that this has put on parents. But I can't imagine if we go back full-time, the strain that it's going to be, if we have to go out and everybody go remotely five days a week. What is that going to do to the parents and the psychological makeup of our children? Just something to think about. I am vehemently opposed to going back five days at this point. And I know this is probably a little unusual. I've counted, it looks like this motion is going to pass. But I intend at that point to submit an alternative motion to go back into the cohort model for the remainder of the nine weeks, and then this board get together again and evaluate it, and make another informed decision after we gather more data. Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks, everyone, for your time.
Absolutely welcome, Mr. Whitterson. I do appreciate your perspective on this. You and I have had some extensive conversations. We do, in some respects, we'll need to agree to disagree, and I'm absolutely aware of your interest in and intent to submit a secondary motion. We'll do that after we take the roll call on this first. And I welcome that. Is there anyone with any follow-up commentary? We've all had an opportunity to speak. Does anyone have any final thoughts or comments before we call a roll? Okay, with that, I will ask Lisa to call the roll on this motion. We've got a motion, we have a second, and we have had discussion and deliberation.
Mr. Hester?
No.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Whitterson?
No.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Braddell?
Yes.
Mr. DiTullio?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven in the affirmative and two no votes.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Whitterson, I will, this is a bit unusual, folks, but I like transparency. I like to be inclusive of the thoughts and the comments of our board. I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Whitterson. We did discuss earlier that you wanted to introduce a motion. I had suggested that you think through some verbiage on that. I'm going to ask, I'm guessing Lisa will be furiously taking notes, so that if we need to, we can memorialize that. And I guess we certainly will in our minutes. So, Mr. Whitterson, I'll turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Giving the conversation I had with Mr. Nickel, Lisa, I promise that the motion will be short, so you won't have to copy furiously. I would like to make a motion that we remain in the current cohort model for the remainder of this first nine weeks. At the end of that period, the board reconvene and reevaluate the goal of five days per week, if supported by the data. That would be my motion tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second for that motion? Mr. Hester, thank you. Does anyone have any additional discussion? We have talked at length, but we're here and committed to the time to have a continued discussion. Is there any further comment? Mr. DiTullio, please.
Just a question for Mr. Whitterson on the reconvening, and not only because I don't know this date off the top of my head, but what would the date of the end of that nine or end of that semester be that you're talking about? Does anyone know that off the top of their head?
Maybe we can turn to Dr. Vitale, members of the administration.
Dr. McKinley has that in front of him, I believe. I don't. I'm sorry.
I believe it's October 28.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any further commentary? Okay. Seeing none, we do have a, excuse me, Mr. Peterson, you have a question?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Before we vote, could we ask the secretary to read the motion back, please?
Absolutely. Lisa, or, yeah, Lisa, could you please read that motion back?
I would ask, because this is recorded, I would ask if Mr. Whitterson himself could repeat the motion?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. My motion tonight is to remain in the current cohort model for the remainder of the first nine weeks. At the end of that nine-week period, to reevaluate with a goal of five days per week, if it's supported by the data.
Thank you, sir. Any other thoughts or comments or questions? Okay. Lisa, would you, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had some discussion on the point. Could you please call a roll on this motion?
Sure. Mr. DiTullio?
No.
Ms. Braddell?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Whitterson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
No.
Ms. Whittle?
No.
Mr. Nickel?
No.
Motion fails with seven in the, with seven no votes and two in the affirmative.
Thank you, Lisa. We will turn to, we've got a couple of other pieces of business to take care of this evening, folks, and then we will open it for any final thoughts, comments, or new business before we have a motion to adjourn. The next item is in Business and Finance. I asked Mr. Jacobs to walk us through that one.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Just one item that I'll make the motion to approve. AMCOM, formerly ComDoc, approved document, approve a document printer, copier, lease renewal with AMDOC, formerly ComDoc, for a 60-month term in the amount of $14,570 per month, as included in your backup.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second for this item? Mr. DiTullio, does anyone have any questions or any discussion on this Business and Finance action item? Seeing none, Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Braddell?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DiTullio?
Yes.
Mr. Whitterson?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative. Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll turn to Personnel Action. Mr. Whittleson, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Tonight, under Personnel Action, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resignations, the appointments, the leaves and the stipend. This information having been provided to the board in backup and discussed in executive session.
Thank you, sir. May I have a second for these Personnel Action items? Ms. Harrison, thank you. Given we've reviewed them and had discussion, we'll turn immediately to a call over roll for these items. Lisa?
Mr. Hester.
Yes.
Mr. Whittleson.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Whittle.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. DiTullio.
Yes.
Ms. Bradel.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you, Lisa. Folks, we've talked at length about how much correspondence, how much communication we've seen. A lot of that is detailed for you in our agenda this evening. The, before we move for a motion to adjourn, one quick point of note logistically, I do see in the Zoom format we use, and I don't know if it's intentional or not, there are three individuals who have quote-unquote raised their hands. We do have a process to register to speak. If any of the three of you would like to follow up with your thoughts or comments, I would say it really is best to start with your child's teacher or building principal, but the members of the administration will make ourselves available if you have any follow-up thoughts or comments. And is there any other new business for members of the board to bring before our motion to adjourn? Well, in, in closing then, I'll just, I'll echo the sentiment that's been conveyed. You know, I, I've mentioned earlier, I had two children who've graduated from the district and I know firsthand all the hard work, all the passion, all the commitment, all the above and beyond that different teachers, paraprofessionals or administration did in bringing them through K through 12. It's, it is exponentially more difficult right now and I am deeply indebted and grateful for the, the time and the energy and that same passion that every member of our district has put towards our goal, which is to provide this quality education for our students. So I thank you all from the bottom of my heart for that. With that, I would like a motion to adjourn. Mr. Whittleson, may I have a second? Mr. Jacobs, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, and thank you all for attending this evening. There's still 489 of you. We appreciate your time and your effort. With that, we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, all. Good night.